...of appeals will come to order. It is May 11th, the time is 7:04. And these meetings are being recorded by the zoning administrator and also by H-CAM. The first item on our agenda is Paul Antonick for a variance from Section 4A of the zoning bylaw and such other relief as necessary to locate two HVAC units within five feet from the side property line where a 15-foot side yard setback is required at 1618 Guilford Road in Residence District C. This is a continuation hearing. And did I totally destroy your last name as I said it?
No, I didn't. I didn't.
Oh, good. Great. He's so diplomatic. Okay. So if you could just give us your name and address. You may have to lift up the mic so that it is your height.
Paul Antonick.
Yes, panty. Much better.
18 Guilford Road in.
Yes. So if you just want to walk us through what you've given us.
Sure, yeah. So as you guys might remember, a couple of weeks ago, I was here. Since we, since you last saw myself, I couldn't make the last meeting, but since you last saw myself, I did walk the property with Mr. Granahan and his daughter. And we reviewed the new location that I think all of us kind of determined in that first meeting would be a better location toward the front of the property. And they felt that, you know, they gave me a verbal okay on it. And so I've, you know, moved forward with having the engineer update this plan per your request in the last meeting. And on that plan, you'll see that we drew in a fence as well, even though I know that the units are the thing that's in question. That's about all I got at this point.
So the original location was where the numbers 40.7 are located.
That's correct.
And you move them to where it has the new AC units. Did we talk about, maybe I'm not recollecting it right, that it was actually going to be going in that indentation on the other side?
No, there's a door there. There's a.
Yeah, that's the door.
Oh, that's the door. Okay.
There's a door in another garage.
Got it. Okay. So then the, what is the distance from the units plus the fence, so that will be the fence, to the side yard? What is that?
He didn't mark it on this, but it's roughly five and a half feet.
Okay, so then.
Which is actually.
Would that be from the front corner of the fence? For that, I mean the.
That would be the.
The southern corner? Yeah, southeast, southeastern corner?
Oh, I'm sorry. He did mark it. It's 3.9 feet from the unit to the side property line.
Right. But then there's a fence outside those units, so.
Right. So what is the distance from the fence? I'm trying to understand.
Yep. About 12 inches. From the unit to that, so it'd be roughly 2'9 to the property line.
So 2.9 feet, so a little under three feet. A little under three feet.
Which is actually the same or potentially even better than the other spot because the property line flares out. So as far as the side distance to the unit is actually better than the other spot. The fence is slightly tighter.
Yep. And Emily, am I correct that the relief would only be for the units, not for the fence?
No, it's not.
Right. And so that distance from the side yard to the outer unit is, is that what we're saying? Is that's 3.9?
Right.
3.9, yep.
Okay. And the relief that they've asked for is five feet?
Yep. So it was modified through the hearing process because it.
Right.
It is possible for me to sneak these more toward the front of the property.
And that pushes it away from the side yard?
It would push it away from the side yard. I just have to be cognizant of distance between the units and make sure that someone can get in to work on them.
Right.
But I could squeeze it and get them further.
Okay.
You know, maybe another foot.
Yeah, one to three feet. So the average front yard setback applied to this property is 30 feet. So, and right now, they're 33 feet from the front yard setbacks. You have a little bit of leeway.
Correct.
All right. Okay. Joe or Robin, do you have any comments?
Well, I think it's a tight site. Not a whole lot of options here. I understand he's being responsive to the concerns of the butters to the north, so it is further from their property. I don't see a lot of, or any location here where it could be placed in compliance with setback requirements, so.
Right. I agree.
Yeah.
So are you comfortable with?
I'm as comfortable as I'm ever going to get, yes.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public who is interested in commenting on the 18 Guilford Road project? Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, my dad, who's the owner of 15 Linden Road, is not able to come tonight, so it's been.
Okay, if you could, if you'd mind just coming up to the mic and giving us your name and address. Or your dad's name and address.
My dad, Leon Granahan.
Right.
My name's Kathleen Granahan. So we're residents of the 15 Linden Road.
Right. Okay.
So PJ and I and my dad, we walked the property, so if I could just take a quick peek on the, or can I?
Sure.
So basically, it's the same area.
Yeah, same spot, that's the porta potty one. This is the famous porta potty spot.
Yeah.
Right.
Which has since moved.
The former.
Okay.
The former porta potty.
So looking at the house, it would be towards the right.
You got it. Exactly.
Yep.
Now, there is, you mentioned a fence, there's no existing fence.
So the units would be fenced in?
Okay, yeah.
And do we have the height of the fence which is being proposed?
Yeah, it's going to be a four-foot-high fence, so a half-height fence.
Okay. And how high are the units? How tall are the units?
About 24 inches.
Okay.
So you can see on this page on the bottom, similar to that, not necessarily identical.
Yeah. That's consistent with our expectations.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Emily, any other issues you see on this? So this is a variance, so we would need to make a, make the variance findings.
We'd have to find that there are circumstances related to soil shape or topography which especially affect the land or structure in question, but not the zoning district.
It's unusually shaped, really.
Yeah, it's unusually shaped parcel. It narrows as it heads to the rear of the parcel. To be out of the front yard setback, you're heading towards the narrowest part of the parcel. With any sort of a reasonable structure, it really precludes anything from being built outside the setback, so.
Okay, comfortable with the first finding. Second one?
Right. Yeah, owing to the circumstances, a literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship. I mean, I guess the hardship is there's really no practical location to place this equipment on the site.
Yep.
So.
And the hardship can be financial or otherwise.
Correct.
And I think.
Correct.
We talked about alternative locations. It just didn't make sense.
Right.
Okay. The third.
Just, just when I did re-explore the roof idea.
Yep.
And it's just too steep, so.
Okay. Okay. Third finding is relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. I think with the size of these units, they're not tall. They're only 24 inches or two feet tall. And with the fence, as we discussed, to shield it and its location and the topography on the joint lots and everything, I think any potential noise impacts would be substantially mitigated.
Yeah, particularly given the relocation that's been proposed.
That's correct.
Yep.
And finally, relief may be granted without, without nullifying, excuse me, or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw. It's a use or it's equipment that's associated with an allowed residential use on the property, so.
Yeah, I mean, this is not.
I think it complies.
Yeah, this is not something that grows the bylaw into disarray. So comfortable with it.
I agree.
So who would like to make the motion? Joe?
I move that we approve the request for variance for the proposed AC units, subject to this revised plan that we received for this evening's hearing. And the construction of the fence, as discussed at the hearing.
Second?
Any other conditions?
Yep.
There's motions been made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're done.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next item on the agenda, depending on which agenda I'm looking at, it relates to TD Bank, but it's actually DeAngelo's application for a special permit A2 under Section 3A 4.11A of the zoning bylaw and such other relief as necessary to construct a 2,500-plus-or-minus square-foot retail bank, TD Bank, with a drive-up teller and ATM at 12 Whiting Street in Business District B. And who's here for the applicant? Yes, sir.
Robert Devlin for the applicant. What you have before you is a request for an extension of the permit. TD Bank has been going through one of those corporate decision-making processes they call a review of their store opening program from Maine to Florida, and they're not quite ready to build this one yet. They assure me it is going to get built. I know for a fact that they have been paying rent for the property since the permit became final, and I'm told also that this is the last time that they will request an extension.
Emily, do we have the permit here?
We do.
You extended it once before.
Right.
Do you want the actual decision or the whole?
Yeah, just the decision. When would the permit otherwise terminate?
End of May.
End of May.
The end of this month.
Per extension, per an 18-month extension that was granted a while ago, it would, yeah, May 3. There's the first page of it.
You can just pass over the whole folder. That's easier. Don't take everything apart. That's crazy. I didn't mean to have you do that. So where's the second page go?
There we go. Nope. There we go.
Right here. So what is this? I'm going to give that to you. Okay. So let me just do, we should do a quick look, make sure there's no other conditions that give us concern.
Right. Was it just a special permit or did we issue a variance for signage?
No, the variance was signed that's by it, and we know we have to give the.
Okay.
Oh, boy, you're good.
You'll have to come back for that.
We'll have to come back.
Right.
Okay.
So the special permit did include a 24-square-foot ground sign. So I'm looking at two different documents here. This is not this. It's clearly not the same. This is.
The recording. Oh, yeah.
It's not the same document. Can you come around here?
Did he give you the signage decision?
No, this is the, so this is what is from.
Yeah, this is not this. This is.
No, this is for a special permit under Section.
Yeah, that's for signage, and this is, this is for the bank.
That's right.
So this one.
Okay.
Yeah. There are two different decisions.
Okay. So are you, the decision that you've, this is not, the decision you just handed me, is that the one you're looking to have extended?
No, I'm looking for the special permit.
Which is this one? Okay. Right. That's really weird.
That's just, oh, this is a repeat.
It's just because of the recording.
Right, right, right. That's just. I seem to recall the issue here was some of the, the parking and how that was allocated and its interaction with the restaurant space.
That's exactly right. So one of the findings we made is that the property is an appropriate location for the operation of the proposed bank with a drive-up teller. Have any conditions changed that were, we would need to reexamine that finding?
I don't think so, no. Still the same?
I don't think so. I mean, the restaurant next door has changed from Chili's to Plaza Aztec, or I think the name of it.
Still a restaurant in their site.
Still a restaurant.
Their site plan's still pretty much the same, so.
Right. Site plan, you know, site plan hasn't changed for either property.
Correct. Right.
And there is a common landlord for both properties.
Right, right, right. Do you want to look at that? I don't see any.
Yeah, I, from my recollection, I don't think there's anything, but.
Under the regs, is there a limit as to how many times we can extend or the time limit of an extension?
Special permits, since you just have to make the finding that it's for good cause.
Yep. How long of an extension are you looking for?
18 months, I ask for, but if you're not comfortable with that, 12 months.
I'm. Yep.
I don't have an objection to 18 months. I think it's obviously, they've shown intent that they're paying rent and continue to pursue that. Things happen with big corporations. Plans change.
We all know that.
Yep.
I describe it a little bit like the gestation period of an elephant.
Yep.
Starts with a lot of noise, always done at a high level, and takes two years to produce results.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Can't argue with that.
So then, is there anyone here in the audience for the TD Bank hearing? No. Yeah, I mean, I don't see any issues here. I think there have been no substantial changes in the existing conditions. There's no reason that we need to reexamine the findings that we previously made.
No.
And I think the applicant has presented good cause for an extension, and the applicant has represented that this will be the final request for an extension.
Right.
So with that, I would accept the motion to extend the special permit for 18 months. That would be 18 months beginning at the end of the current expiration date, which is May 30th, 2016.
So would that roll over to the next working day, 31st?
So the permit would then take effect.
31st to Memorial Day when we observe it.
So starting May 31st is when the 18 months begins. Is there such a motion?
So I think it certain would be November 30th.
To terminate?
For 18 months of the following, of 2017.
Seventeen.
So if you want to make it certain, you can just say November 30th. I don't know what day the week end is, but that'd be a good idea.
Yep.
Actually, it's interesting, May 30th this year is the observed Memorial Day, so that is on hold.
Yep.
So, okay.
So then the motion is to extend the special permit through November 30th, 2017.
So moved.
Yep.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Thank you very much.
Approved. Thank you. Let's give this file, as best I can, back to the panel.
All right. Get your money's worth, Joe.
That's right. Mario.
Good night.
Thanks for coming. Do we have a new, does not look like, we can give that to you.
Yep.
You guys? How you doing?
All right.
Okay, you can see that the panel has slightly changed. Robin has recused herself from this proceeding, and Mario has stepped in graciously to sit on the board with us, and he was designated at the prior meeting to be the third zoning board member for this hearing. And that hearing is the next item on our agenda, which is Riverstone. This is a continuation hearing. The project is off Ward Street, map 124, lots 70 to 75 and 26, for construction of a, for a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, as amended to construct a 36-unit condominium development, including nine affordable units on approximately 6.7 acres of land located in Residence District B. And who's here for the applicant this evening? And we need to get one more chair for. When the time comes, I'm going to give this to you to make the motion. So Emily, since the last hearing, what additional documents have we received into the record?
Since the last hearing, we received a letter from Attorney Baker requesting, I guess, an overview of the board's opinion on the compliance of the application with the smittal requirements of DHCD's regulations and the board's own regulations for 40Bs.
Yep.
We received that yesterday. We received today comments from the fire prevention officer, Dave Dammstra, related to the project, and.
The traffic analysis?
We received that at the last hearing, yep. And then the applicant also forwarded a presentation that he intends to make this evening.
And you've submitted that presentation for the record as well as for the proceeding? Great. And we have the town's special counsel for real estate here, Susan Murphy. Susan, have you had a chance to look at the letter from Mr. Baker?
Emily forwarded the letter to me. What Emily and I did was look at what had been submitted, now obviously reserving review by the town, the board's peer review civil engineer for a more detailed. But Emily and I did a, a look through the regulations, the board, the zoning board's rules and regulations promulgated under the 40B regulations with respect to 40B submissions. I also looked at a fair number of cases. But what we did was go through and take notes on the, how, how complete we felt the submissions were. And based on just the regulations, both the states and the towns, the boards, and also on the project eligibility letter, there were things that Emily and I both flagged as requiring or, you know, should require additional information if the board felt like they needed it to do their review, so.
I mean, I understand the letter came May 9th, or actually was received May 10th.
Yep.
So I'm not looking for a definitive. And I just want to make sure that we're in process so that we will be in a position to respond to the applicant in an appropriate time.
Yeah, I mean, and there are some things that maybe if you, at whatever point you want in the hearing, Emily and I can go through and explain kind of our review, and then the board could decide what you feel you need to see.
Okay. I understand that the applicant has their traffic engineer or expert here, so I want to make sure we have appropriate time for that. And since traffic impact is going to be a critical part of our review, my preference would be to start with that unless the applicant has.
If I can, we also have tonight.
If you just make sure you introduce yourself.
Yes, thank you very much. Again, my name is Warren Baker. I represent the applicant. What we have tonight are two additional people. One is our architect, Jim Kelleker, from Axium Architects, and also a traffic engineer, author of the traffic report that we had submitted two weeks ago. If it can, only because of the timing issue, with a brief presentation, I thought I would start with the architect, and that would give us a little bit more time to get the traffic study, if that's okay with the board.
That's terrific, yes. So please, yes, use the mic.
Is that, you hearing me?
I hear you fine. Can the folks back there?
And the folks up there?
Can we figure out how to get the drawings?
Don't look at me. I mean nothing about it.
We're looking for, we'll have to wait for Emily to get back here to. Emily, we need your assistance on. So what I suggest, two things. First, I think it'd be helpful to dim the lights so that we and other members of the public can see. And second, just make sure that you speak into the mic. I can't say how long that cord is, whether you'll be able to reach over there or not. It's, the light's, it's right there. The switch right there. There we go.
Okay, so everybody's hearing me?
Yes.
I'll be brief. These units are, there's 36 units. They're all based on the same basic two-bedroom unit, so I'll just give you a quick walkthrough. On the right of this is the lower level, and on the lower right, you can see there's a two-car garage. It's about a 20 by 22-foot two-car garage. Just the left of that is the front entry, takes you into an entry hall with a stair and the kitchen. The layout right up the left side is an open kitchen, dining, and family room. And we found it's been a real popular unit because people downsizing and all can come in with whatever furniture they're bringing out of their home, and they can fit a full dining room set in this if they want. They can fit in a much larger living rooms layout, lesser dining room table. It's, it's very. It's, it's, it's very flexible in that respect and you've actually got some in Hingham and they sold extremely quickly here. They're up at Derby Brook. It's a very similar layout. The, behind the garage, on the upper right, is a master suite and it's a little less obvious, but the master suite has a good-sized master bath with lavatory tub and shower. And tucked in off that corridor is a little half-bath that serves the open space and coming in out of the garage, there's a small mudroom and laundry area, all on the first floor. Go to the left side, we're looking at the upper level. We go up the main stair and we walk into a loft room. It's open to the two-story living room. So it gets light from not, if it's an end unit, as we show here, it has a bay window on the side that gets light and it also gets light from the upper windows in the family room. It's looking down and it's wide open to that family room. You step to the right and on the front side, over the garage, there's a really good-sized second bedroom. It's roughly 18 by 16. And then there's a one, you know, there's a tub shower, regular-sized bathroom on that floor as well. So we have a two-and-a-half bathroom unit with two full bedrooms, one up and one down. If we go to the next slide, I believe, Brian, we may find the three-bedroom unit. That's looking pretty similar to me. Keep going, try another one. Okay. So the three-bedroom unit always occurs on an end unit. In other words, we have triplexes and quadraplexes and duplexes. So the three-bedroom unit can only occur on an end. The downstairs is exactly the same as the two-bedroom unit, but when we go up the stairs, instead of finding an open loft, there is a third bedroom carved out of that loft, which uses the bay window as its window. And we have a big, good-sized hallway there. We do not overlook the family room in this case and so the two bedrooms on the second floor share that bathroom. It's really the only difference.
So just to, I'm clear, what you're saying is that all of the three bedrooms are end units, but not all units are necessarily three bedrooms?
That's right. We have 18, we're proposing 18 two-bedroom units. Some of those two-bedroom units will be end units, however, all, and then some of the middle units in the quadraplexes and triplexes, they will always be two bedrooms. Okay? Why don't we look at the elevations? It'd be nice to be able to blow that up, I don't know as we can. So on the top, we have the front side of a quadriplex and you can see on the front, on, you pick one side or the other, what stands out here immediately is that we've designed, purposely designed the unit with a variety of one-story roof lines across the front. There's a, you know, there's, there's a little portico for the front door, one-story portico, right beside the garage, the garage roof, which is one story again. And setting back from the garage roof, we kind of break up the front of it with a good-sized dormer and a little bit of a dormer over the front portico actually puts light into the staircase. There's a couple of windows there that put light into the staircase. We have two different types of dormers, so when we do a quadriplex, we don't end up with four big dormers across the front. We get some variety there, but the same bedrooms sit inside those, those dormers. Side, side elevation in the middle shows that in fact it's a two-story unit, which maximum height is around 29 feet from grade to the peak. And in the, in the lower level, you can see the rear of the unit, which is all one stories. The, the higher walls are a story and a half of glass in the, in the family rooms. That's how they get to, to, you know, the second story for the overlook from the loft. Now, as far as what we expect to do here in Hingham is the units will be, the different buildings will be possibly different colors. They will vary between being wood shingle siding and clapboard siding to give them a little variety. The trim will all be standard New England-type trim. The windows will be double-hung, six-over-six look and on the front, we'll have the colonial pillars at the front entry. We're going to try to keep it looking similar to what we expect in a Hingham home. And the, the one-story roof line on front and back is to sort of blend into the typical suburban neighborhood we get here in Hingham so that nothing seems exceedingly high or out of place. Trying to think what else I've got here. That, that pretty well covers it. Do we have any questions?
Let me ask, am I correct that every unit has a two-car garage associated with it?
Every unit has two-car garage.
And is there any differentiation between the affordable units and the other units in terms of the layout?
The layout is the same. The exterior is identical.
And the interiors are identical?
The, the interior layout's identical. I can't speak for finishes.
Right, okay. Okay?
Actually, I do have one.
Sure.
You said 18 two-bedroom units. Did I hear four bedrooms too?
No.
That's a possibility, so 18, two, 18, three.
18 and 18.
Okay, all right, so 80 bedrooms then.
That's right.
Or, sorry, 90 bedrooms. My math is off. Okay.
All set?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
For the record, my name is Ron Mueller, registered professional traffic engineer in the Commonwealth and principal with Ron Mueller and Associates. Just looking at that picture behind you, I bet you they didn't need traffic engineers back then. I prepared this traffic...
They did need people walking around with shovels.
Yes.
Significant public damage.
I prepared the traffic study that was submitted as part of this project and this study follows the typical state standards and guidelines for traffic impact assessment.
Okay, I'm sorry, are we gonna, you gonna be walking through slides?
Yes, I am.
We'll give the lights up, okay?
Yep. And that includes an evaluation of existing conditions in the area, a projection of future traffic conditions, both with and without the project, and then an analysis of the impacts of the project and any recommendations to mitigate those impacts. For this particular project, and this is a little difficult to see on this graphic, but we studied the intersection of High Street and Ward Street and French Street, the one just to the south of that, which is what I refer to as Ward Street Extension, that one-way section of road that meets up with Ward Street just south of High Street. Obviously, the Viking Lane driveway in a section with Ward Street and then down to the south, the Ward Street and Cushing Street in a section. So as far as evaluating existing conditions, there's a number of things that we do. The first and foremost, obviously, is collecting traffic counts. We did that through 48-hour ATR, Automatic Traffic Recorder counts on Ward Street to collect both daily and peak hour volumes, as well as weekday morning peak from 7:00 to 9:00 and weekday afternoon peak from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., turning movement counts at all of these study intersections. The reason for those time periods is because, one, you have generally the most volume of traffic on the adjacent streets during the morning and afternoon rush hour and, two, residential development projects generate the highest volume of traffic during those same hours. We then looked at adjusting those counts. They were done in March of this year, but we need to make sure that March volumes aren't lower than average, so we've researched Mass DOT database, permanent count station data in the area, which shows us that March volumes were in fact slightly below average and we increased them by 3% to reflect average conditions, again, consistent with state guidelines. We did a detailed accident research at all of the study locations. That information showed us that there is a high frequency of accidents at the High Street and Ward Street intersection. In fact, on average, it was a 5.3 accidents per year and when you calculate a crash rate for the intersection, which is basically a comparison of the number of accidents versus the volume of traffic through a particular intersection, we found that it was significantly higher than the state average. That is sort of an indicator that there may be problems at this particular intersection. The higher the volumes, the lower the crash rate typically because the more traffic you have through an intersection, you expect to get more accidents, but with the volume of traffic through this intersection, the number of accidents by comparison to the volumes are significant. The rest of the study intersections had less than one accidents per year and a crash rate well below the state average. We also collected vehicle speed data on Ward Street, which showed us that the 85th percentile speeds range from 32 to 34 miles per hour. The reason for collecting that information is because you base the minimum sight distance requirements on the speed of traffic. The higher the speed of traffic, the more sight distance you need to be able to exit Viking Lane. And then finally, sight distance analysis at the driveway. We have an axis of 500 feet to the north of the driveway, to the south of the driveway, the sight distance is limited by the curvature of the road, but we're able to attain about 415 feet. The minimum requirement is 235 feet. The desirable distance, meaning that a car doesn't have to come to a stop to avoid a collision and only slightly has to reduce their speed, is 335 feet. So you can see that we have more than sufficient sight distance to allow traffic to safely exit the site. Next slide, please. For the future conditions, we projected that traffic to a seven-year design horizon, again, consistent with state guidelines, to the year 2023 and we did that by applying an annual growth rate to the counted volumes based on DOT, historical traffic count data. In the last five years, there's been an average growth of about 1.6% per year. I chose to use a 2% per year growth rate to be on the conservative, i.e. high side, in projecting future volumes. I've also checked with the town to see if there are any other development projects in the area that might significantly impact traffic, but found that there were none.
When you said you checked with the town, that was Hingham? Did you also check with Waymouth?
I checked with, um, Hingham.
Because we're pretty close to the border with Waymouth there.
Right.
Was there any investigation with Waymouth?
I can do that.
Okay.
And then the next step really is projecting, how much traffic will this project generate? And for that, we, traffic engineers, traffic engineers use what's called the Institute for Transportation Engineers, ITE for short, and they have a trip generation manual, which compiles hundreds of different land uses and develop trip generation rates that we can apply to various land uses. In this case, residential condominium slash townhouse is one of their land use codes and the volume of traffic is based on the number of units. In this case, 36 units, as you can see here, will generate about 23 total trips, four in and 19 out in the morning and 26 trips in the afternoon, 17 entering and nine exiting. Again, that's during the peak hour, the morning peak and the afternoon peak. The distribution of traffic, where traffic will go, is dependent on primarily people's job locations and to determine that, I've used, used census data, journey to work data, which from the most recent census, gives all of the, all of the workplaces that residents of Hingham, where people work in Hingham. And from that, we can identify, well, if you work in Quincy, you're going to take this route, if you work in Austin or in, you know, the surrounding communities. And that basically showed us that about 75% of the traffic from this project will, will want to head north on Ward Street toward High Street and about 25% to and from the south on Ward Street toward Cushing Street. In the traffic study, I've, I've provided a detailed volume assignment and when you look at that, basically going on the roadways outside the study area, we add, the highest volume of traffic will be on High Street towards Waymouth with about 13 vehicles during the peak hours, three vehicles on French Street, four vehicles on High Street to and from the east, five vehicles on Cushing Street to and from the south and one car on Cushing Street to the east. So you can see from those numbers that beyond this area, this project has a very limited or minimal impact to traffic. So on Ward Street, immediately heading north in that short section between Viking Lane and High Street, we'll be adding about 20 cars during the peak hours, or which averages out to about one car every three minutes and to the south, about six additional cars, again, until it reaches Cushing Street and disperses, which is about one car every 10 minutes. So the final step in, or steps in the traffic study is analyzing the impacts of the project and then making recommendations of potential problems or mitigation that we see necessary. The analysis is done under both existing no-build and build conditions. Existing being obviously what's happening today, no-build being the year 2023 without the project and then the build 2023 with the project. And comparing the no-build to the build gives us an evaluation of the impacts of this project. The High Street and Ward Street and French Street in this section has very long delays that we've calculated by 2023 without this project, with a level of service F calculated for both Ward Street and French Street approaches. Obviously, F level of service means very long delays, long queues, so these, the situation is going to, you have long delays and queues on those approaches now. It's obviously going to get worse the more traffic you add.
Let me ask you one thing about that.
Sure.
Is that an overall intersection approach, LOS, or are there movements, like a left turn or a through, which have, which have worse...
Right. In this particular case, it's an approach level of service because there's single lane approaches, so on French Street, you have one lane approaching, so all cars have to be made from that one lane. When you have multiple approach lanes, then you can assign a level of service to each movement.
So would, so would you assume or would you take from that analysis that it's because of the volumes on Ward Street, the unobstructed volumes?
It's a combination of both.
I mean, I mean, there aren't any gaps, there aren't acceptable gaps.
Correct, correct. There's, there's obviously a high volume of traffic, a relatively high volume of traffic on both Ward Street and French Streets approaching the intersection and in combination with the volume of traffic on High Street causes those long delays. If there were fewer traffic on High Street, then obviously the, the level of service would be, would be better.
So I would think, I mean, as it is now, it's, there's really not a whole lot of acceptable gaps on, due to the High Street volumes.
Correct.
Okay.
I want to keep in mind that these gaps, the model that we, traffic engineers have to use when we analyze intersections, use very conservative gap times.
That's going to be my next question.
Right, right.
How long is the critical gap that's assumed in the modeling these days?
Seven-point-one seconds.
Right.
So, I mean, I've done...
I remember longer, but, yeah.
Right.
I used to call it the Midwestern Gap.
Exactly.
Which is about the only place in the country where people actually wait for traffic.
What I've done in plenty of times in...
I'm going to object. I think Hingham drivers are very courteous and they...
Not the ones I see. Not the ones I see, but...
I mean, I've done vehicle delay and gap studies on many, many projects in the past in Massachusetts and I've never found anyone taking a 7.1-second gap to make a left turn. It's usually around five seconds.
You would be a very unpopular person if you did that.
But the lower the gap, the less safe it gets, so you need to take that into consideration as well, considering the fact that there is an accident problem at this intersection. I did not feel comfortable analyzing it with a lower gap, even though it may happen.
And that's probably why there's a higher accident rate, is people get a little bit impatient and they take chances that they wouldn't ordinarily take.
Based on what I've seen out there, I think the accidents are happening primarily because of limited sight distance, both from exiting on Ward Street and exiting on High, on French Street. On Ward Street, if you're looking left, you have very limited sight lines. On French Street, also looking left... On French Street, also looking left, very limited sight lines. You have the grade of the road in combination with the curvature of High Street that has the effect of limiting those sight lines, and I believe is probably a main cause for the accidents at that intersection.
Right. As you know, there's been some funky striping and painting of lines that have been going on there in the past year, particularly on the French Street approach.
Right, right. I think what they were trying to do.
The virtue away from the center of the intersection just to give you a fighting chance.
To give you more line of sight, actually, I think was the intent of that striping.
Right.
Exactly. The Cushing Street, Ward Street intersection operates fine. By 2023, there's a calculated level of service E, so it does indicate longer delays for the approach, but no change in the level of service as a result of the project. I mean, again, we're only adding five to six cars through that intersection. The Viking Lane intersection with Ward Street is calculated to operate at a desirable level B for both left and right turns exiting that site. So what I've recommended, actually, and the recommendation is focused mainly on a High Street and French Street intersection, given the level of accidents that we've had at this intersection and the calculated delays getting worse over the years, one of the things that I looked at to improve that situation is actually to create an always-stop intersection there. Always-stop intersections can be an effective way to not only improve safety, but also operations at the intersection. The reason for the safety improvement is when you have an always-stop controlled intersection, any approach, from any approach that you approach the intersection, all you have to be able to see is the stop line on the other approaches. You don't have to have 300, 400 feet of sight line in order to safely cross the intersection. Also, according to the manual and uniform traffic control devices, there's certain guidelines that tell you whether or not an always-stop control could be applicable in this, in this condition.
I was just going to ask you if it meets the warrants, yeah.
Exactly. They try to have not even necessarily volumes on all approaches, but similar. And it basically says if you have at least 300 vehicles on the main, mainline approach per hour and about 200 vehicles per hour on the side streets, then that could be a good candidate for always-stop control. The MUTCD also recommends that you investigate all feasible alternatives before you install a traffic signal. I can't tell you whether or not this intersection would meet the warrants for a signal. Certainly, based on peak hour volumes, it appears that it would, but you need much more data, you need at least eight hours of traffic count data on both the minor street approaches and on High Street to determine whether signal control could be warranted. But again, the MUTCD recommends that if there are alternatives to signal control, those should be investigated first. Because of the limited sight lines along High Street approaching the intersection, I'm also recommending that advanced warning signs be placed, actually, on all four approaches, let's say, stop ahead. And the town may also want to consider installing an overhead flashing beacon that flashes red on all four approaches to, again, put more emphasis on the fact that it is now stop-controlled on all four approaches. It wouldn't affect Ward Street and High Street much because they're used to the stop control now, but certainly High Street traffic, they need to be forewarned that this is now changed. With always-stop control, we can get that intersection to work at a level D during both peak hours under 2023 build conditions, both no build and build, there's no change as a result of this project. Again, the volumes that this project adds to the intersection are very minimal. Basically, you count today and you count tomorrow out there, you're going to easily get that difference in volume, what this project will add to the intersection. So from a traffic impact perspective, this project really does not have a significant impact at any one of these locations. But recognizing the fact that there is an existing safety problem and we are calculating F level of service at this intersection, I thought it prudent to come up with some recommendations that the town can use to improve that location. Along Ward Street, I've also made some, I'm sorry, not along Ward, along Viking Lane, I've made some recommendations, most notably that a sidewalk should be added along Viking Lane, that a stop line and stop sign should be installed on the approach to Ward Street, and that a crosswalk be striped across Viking Lane to connect the sidewalk that exists along that side of the road. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can we get the lights on, please? Joe? No, I've asked mine.
I don't have any questions. Do we have peer review or?
Well, that's something that has not happened yet, but we will be scheduled. We'll make sure that that happens. When you said that the study was based on census data, was, was that the 2010 census?
It was the 2000 census. The 2010 census unfortunately did not, was not nearly detailed enough as the 2000, the 2001.
Okay. Emily, do you know when the Green Bush line started running? What year?
I apologize, I don't.
Anyone here know? Anyone out there know when, when the Green Bush line started running?
After 2000.
I think it was, I'm sorry?
After 2000.
After 2000. So, so the traffic, High Street is the main connection to the Weymouth-Green Bush station, which people use taking to Boston. So what I'm hearing is that the traffic study did not account for the Green Bush line if it was based on 2010, 2000 census data. Is that correct?
That would be correct, yes.
October 31st.
But that's only as it refers to the Journey to Work data, correct?
That's correct.
Which you use to determine the trip distribution?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we assumed.
So it's not the volumes.
I'm not sure I understand the difference.
Well, one of the, the trip distribution is just to determine what the likely patterns that traffic will take.
Right.
From that. And it's pretty common, I think it's standard, actually, to use the US Census Journey to Work data in determining that.
Right, but the whole point of Green Bush was actually to change the way people get to work.
Correct.
So it's not, it's not a redistribution of existing traffic. It's directing new traffic onto High Street. People would now be traveling who otherwise wouldn't be on High Street to go.
But I think those volumes were accounted for in their traffic counts that they did, their existing traffic counts, which were done in March.
March, correct.
You said, March of this year.
Got it. So, so, okay, so you'd have the volumes that you just, okay. Yeah, okay. What assumptions were made in terms of the schools that people might be taking their children to?
Well, again, along those same lines, the counts were done while schools were in session.
No, but in terms of the build option, where now there's new residents on Viking Lane, they're going to be taking their children to school, what assumptions were made in terms of which schools they'd be going to?
I did not make any assumptions on that. I mean, that's, you mean as far as how many schoolchildren there would be or?
And how, I'm concerned, traffic, how many trips and what direction they'd be taking.
Well, I would assume that, which is one of the reasons why I made the recommendation for the sidewalk, that I'm assuming the school bus wouldn't go into the development to pick up children. So the children would be walking along Viking Lane on the sidewalk and then picking up the school bus at the corner, I'm assuming.
So in addition to the school bus, many residents will take their children to school, will drive them. And so I'm trying to get a sense of whether or not you factor that into the traffic analysis. During, during peak school hours coming and going, are we going to have a lot of traffic going in a particular direction?
Not, I didn't, I didn't look at that specifically. I think the short answer to that is that the volume of traffic that we're talking about is so low to begin with that the, the effect of people taking their children to school wouldn't change the results of the traffic study.
Okay.
I just want to say for the record, according to Wikipedia, and we all know.
They're accurate.
It's accurate, right? The Green Bush started on Halloween in 2007.
That was very controversial.
Yes, right.
They were afraid the trick-or-treaters were going to get run over because they weren't used to the trains.
Somehow that's appropriate, but.
So, thank you. Your report's been received and we will be having a peer review done of the report. So, thank you very much.
But it would be good to, I'm sorry. It would be good to check on what's happening in Weymouth and Jackson Square.
I will do that.
Area in terms of new developments that are planned within this timeframe and if that might affect anything, so.
I will do that.
One second. Yes, yes.
I also suggest maybe check in with the town engineer because the reason why there's been new striping and all these different things is I do think, and I'm not sure how recent, because I lose track of years, the town did its own study of that intersection, was trying to come up with comic, common, traffic calming measures.
Right.
So I believe there may have already been some studies of that intersection done by the town, and you might want to check with the town engineer.
Okay.
To see what he has.
Okay.
Right. And that accident rate, I just want to note that that's more than two times the statewide average for similar intersections.
Correct.
At that location, so that's pretty significant.
Right.
Right, that's a significant variation, so.
And you, you indicated there were levels from A to F. Is F the worst? Is there anything worse than that?
Nope.
We are, we are at the, at the work. Got it.
Well, sometimes the model just can't give you the number. It spits out asterisks.
We're not quite that bad.
No, no, correct, no.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Does the applicant have any other presentation that you would like to make?
No further presentations. What we would like to see, maybe after comments, is talk a little bit about some of the outstanding information, identifying that, peer review, you know, issues, pretty much the following the sense of, of my letter to get a little guidance from the board.
Okay. Do we have any town officials here who have comments or questions?
Mr. Gannon?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. I hope you had a seventh sense of room. I don't have anything specific to add. I'm really here to listen, show support to the neighbors, and to be of any help I can. So that's more of it, just information, so I can go back and I will speak with council, real estate council, if I have any questions.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I do see the police chief, I'm sorry, the fire chief back there. He does not look like his brother, so.
Wrong chief, Olson.
Bob Olson, Fire Chief, Town of Hingham. We did send a letter in on this, and some of the things that kind of concern the fire department, particularly that I want to just bring up today, is in looking at the plans that we've looked at, which were October of 2015. We haven't seen many changes in those plans over the initial comments that we made. We're very concerned about the size of the driveways outside the garage, that they be at least long enough to hold cars in the driveway that don't extend out into the sidewalk or possibly obstruct the road. And we are concerned with the road layout. I don't know if you have a picture of it here, but the way it goes in to a cul-de-sac with a road going left and a road going right, all called Viking Lane, this is not a good idea for public safety because it's going to be difficult to address the roads in the way that the town has addressing planned for 9/11 and public safety. So fire has actually recommended that Road B, because it's a longer road, that we actually have two different roads in there to be able to number things better for public safety. And because the distance is over 800 feet on Road B, we are looking for secondary access off Ward Street. We really feel that if there's any problem on the primary road getting in, this building is long enough that public safety won't be able to access the site with only one way in. So we are looking for a secondary access to this development onto Ward Street. And that should be a different street name than the Viking Lane going in, just so there's no confusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other town officials before I ask for comments from the public? Okay, any members of the public have questions or comments? This will not be your only time, but if you have something, particularly something that is responsive to what you've heard this evening, please raise your hand, you'll be recognized, and come up to the mic. Yes, sir. And again, please, anyone speaking should give their name and address. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. My name is Farouk Youssef. I'm here representing my daughter, Yvette Youssef, who's sitting here. Just, I have one comment here about myself first. I am a registered architect, licensed in 27 states, been practicing in the United States since 1970 or something, so.
So is one of the states you're registered in Massachusetts?
I believe so. I just want to make a comment first about the traffic study. The traffic study, as I see it, is done in March. And by the way, I lived in the same exact house that my daughter is living in for 34, 34 years of my life. And that particular house at the corner of Viking Lane and Ward Street. And I have witnessed, I can tell you right now, three accidents, very dangerous accidents in my driveway. And the evidence of these accidents still exists today. This happened around 2000. If you go and look at my house, her house, I'm going to be saying my house, her house, so allow me to do that. She still lives, even she bought the house still mine, but.
We're, we're actually having family therapy sessions after this, so.
I think that's needed. Otherwise, she's not going to invite me for any chicken dinners anymore. If you look at the house now, my driveway, I'm sorry.
Her driveway. We got it.
The driveway, we got it.
You got it. The tree in the corner of the house, you look at it, have some pictures of it, you find a big gouge in the tree because a car came in, wiped that.
Right.
There's another tree before that towards, coming from Cushing, was hit by a car and get destroyed, and the town replaced that tree. If you go and look now, you find that tree smaller in diameter than the other trees. Other accident happened, my daughter was in the house, a car skidded, get hit, the woman getting a serious accident. Luckily, my daughter was there, she called 911 and did the necessary things. It happened to be that guy, a colleague of mine, works with me in the same office. These accidents is happening all the time. I appreciate the traffic study, but it's done in March. You guys recall last year when we had the snow seven feet high, and every year, you cannot get out of my driveway into the street. You have to, because you don't see, you're sitting in the car, covered by the snow both sides, you crawl out, you're literally halfway in the street before you can see a car coming from right to left. The same issue with Viking Lane. I used to clear that Viking Lane for many years, so I can just make like a U-turn to get out. So when the snow comes in, which I think we are in New England and we get snow, you cannot get out of the driveway, you cannot get out of the curvature, and you are halfway in the road, literally in the road, and the car coming speeding or even slow, try to put the brake, the guy skids and get hit. I truly worry every day about my daughter and my grandson, who's a young driver now, getting out of the driveway. So the intersection at my, my driveway or her driveway and Viking Lane, that's the problem. High Street and Ward Street, yes, it's a big problem too. You have to be careful. The four-way sign is great, but you have not solved the issue for traffic coming of Viking Lane. You have not addressed that. And especially in the wintertime where the snow piled high and you cannot see where you're going either right or left. So that's a consideration you have to be addressed. At least we get four months of snow in here before we can, we can, you know, be looking at a clear day and you can see all around. So that's concerning, the traffic study that I heard this morning here. I'm looking at the floor plans that my fellow architect presented. I don't think the issue is the layout of the units. It is not that issue that we are here concerned about. It's the density. It's the closeness of the units to each other. The impact is going to have on the neighborhood. The houses are so close, I have the drawings here, some of it is like 5, 10 feet from back to each other. We have state fire codes that allow certain distance, a minimum 30 feet between units before you start putting fire rating on the walls. So if a fire happens in this area, which again, during my life, living there, fires used to happen in that same area, the. used to happen in that same area, the fire department comes rushing, puts a fire. If fire happens in this area now, as a landlocked area, God forbid, all the things will go up in flames, affecting all the houses, all the units. So that's another consideration, the closeness of the units is just unbelievable. That, you know, that's the, what you call the saying, you're trying to fit 20 pounds of, you know, what, in two-pound bag? You know, it's just unbelievable. For this area, it was proposed to have six houses, six houses in six acres, and they could not justify or could not prove the drainage for six houses. And now they're coming with 36 homes in the same area, neglecting the wetland, neglecting the habitat, neglecting the aquifer, the effect of the neighborhood. Is that going to be an improvement to the town living, to the people living in the surrounding? Isn't that something that we have to be considering for the neighbors, the quality of life for Hingham? I lived in Hingham, as I'm saying, for 34 years before I moved out and sold the house to my daughter. I was very proud, and I really, truly, maybe that's my chance to thank the town, the board, for giving me the chance to live in town, and they really appreciate it. Good school system, good management, they look for the residents, for the welfare of the residents. Everything you guys did and decided to do between the, what you call it, the Derby shops to this, and all commendable achievements that they have. But this project here, we go through, trust me, is going to be like a bad mark in the town, for the town of Hingham. Hingham is one of the towns in the entire United States that people come from all over to live in Hingham. My next-door neighbor moved from Florida, especially at the time, in '74, to move in the house next door because of the school system, because of the town of Hingham. Anyway, one of the things that, as I said, I am an architect, and my fellow architect is here too, every year I have to go and at least show a credit that I studied 20 hours in health, safety, and welfare, which stands for HSW, okay? Let me look at, analyze this project that's in front of us here. Talk about health. Does this project really give us any health value? I guess it's all of our neighbors, letters being sent, the selectments discussing the impact of that community, this development in the community. Is it going to affect the health of it? The water, the drainage, I can go on, that's not, that's been neglected. If this project is good to have, to do it, maybe in a 30, 40-acre site, not in a six-acre site that locked between houses. The other thing is, that's going to the health. And I can go on and on. There's, as I'm saying, there's about 34 pages of health issues. Safety, I think the fire chief mentioned the safety, and they mentioned the safety about cars getting out of these driveways, and my neighbors experienced the same problem, all of them, ask all of them. It's a dangerous intersection, dangerous place. So that's welfare. Is that, are we really improving the community? Are we adding a plus here or a minus for the entire town? It's not only for those people that get affected. The report here, there is a big hill that's a ledge. You drive by, highest coming from Cushing by the curb, you look and you see the ledge. That hill is over 20, 30 feet high, old ledge. How is that going to be removed? Blasting? That's the only way? What happened to those houses? The surrounding houses? All this blasting, the shaking of the ground, what happened to it? All this house is going to be damaged. And unfortunately, you might not see the damage because most of the basements are half-sheetro covered. You don't see the cracks, have another shaking, maybe the house collapses, roof would fall. Who's going to be responsible? The developer unfortunately may be gone, maybe sold it, make his money and left. Who's going to be held responsible to take care of our citizen, who's the responsibility they have? None of that has been addressed. Now you have this hill of granite, that massive hill leveled. What happened to the water? What happened to the rain? Again, the driveway in front of her house, I'm corrected now, when the snow start melting, there is ice, the drains are blocked, and the water collect in front of the whole street, you cannot get rid of it. When the snow piled up, who's going to do it? Where is it going to go? As I'm saying, you guys, we've been here. I've been here in '78. I've seen last year, like a record that I've never seen. So I'm just, I can go on and on, and I won't make take much of your time. However, I, again, I looked here about chapter, the 760 CMR 56, and the regulation that you aware of it. I looked at it and just took some sections of it. It's cut and paste. I did not change a single word in it. It's just cut and paste, thanks to the new technology. My granddaughter helped me a lot with that because I'm old-fashioned, still try to draw with a pencil and triangle, but. I looked at here, which I'll give you copies here, but just let me, if you give me a few minutes, I'll go through that here.
I'm going to ask you, just because I want to make sure we have time for everyone else, it'd be great if you could submit that for the record, but I really want to.
May I?
We are.
Allow me a few minutes, anybody affected to that?
So let me, we are very familiar with the regulations, and I'd appreciate if you were not going to be reading them into the record. We are very familiar with them.
All right. As I'm saying, the only one thing that might say, a lot of this regulation has not been followed. And that's what I'm trying to say. A lot, one of the first one, it says here, accompanying photographs of surrounding houses. Have you seen those photographs? Has anybody seen it? And they can go on and on, different things here, and.
So if you would like to submit that, that would be greatly.
Allow me a minute?
Yes.
As I'm saying, I highlight it, so it means you copy it here for you to.
Great, thank you.
If you can give that to Emily.
Actually, here. Sorry, one second. One here, and then you can give the other to Emily, so we can just take a quick look.
The area highlighted in yellow.
Yep.
And most of it has not been responded or addressed in there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Just wait till you get to the mic before you start.
George Peterson, 38, Ward Street, Hingham.
Yes, sir.
Questions I have is basically the absorption system that you've created behind my house. I don't know if you have a map out there.
Yeah, we do.
And we've walked it.
And my backyard sits below that hill that they're going to put these things on. So, and the water table behind my house is around four feet. And with this absorption system, we'd probably raise that up so that there'd be water in my backyard. There's a river that grows, that flows, excuse me, flows underground from High Street to the swamp area, behind my house and so forth. And what I've done in the past was, I drove a well down into that river. And the reason I say there's a river there, because I have doused the land, and that river goes from High Street, and three other people have driven wells in that water. Then the water comes down Viking Lane.
Mm-hmm.
Comes down Viking Lane, ends up in the front of my house. It's a low part. High Street comes down, and the other Ward Street, and they meet, so that there's always water coming from that area. And with these houses, there's no area for the drainage to go. It's all coming off the roofs, what have you. And I assume that would all end up down into the street. And on the traffic, I don't understand, there's going to be 36 houses there, and there's going to be two cars each, that's 72. So I don't understand why there's only a few cars coming in and out of there for that period of time. And I believe, as he said, this is a fire hazard, and if you look at what happened in Canada, you can get an idea of what happened. They were stacked one after the other, just like these houses here. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
June Friedman, I'm at 13 Autumn Circle for the past 40-something years. I had a question about the traffic study also. This gentleman mentioned 36 units with two cars each, yet you said something about 29 cars going in and out? What happened to the other, did your 60 cars?
Do you want, I mean, yeah, please, if you'd like to.
The reason for the difference is, first of all, not everybody leaves during the peak hour or arrives during the peak hour. So there's plenty of people who leave earlier, who leave at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning, and not between 7:30 and 8:30 in the morning. Same thing coming home at night. People come home earlier than the peak, some people come home later than the peak. This is essentially a compilation of over 60 studies that the ITE has done at condominium and townhouse developments throughout the country. So they have a very good database on a per-unit basis that we can apply, that gives us a very good idea of how much traffic this is going to generate. A lot of people work from home, that won't be leaving during the peak hours, so that's the reason for the difference.
So basically, a model was applied using industry norms to figure out what the appropriate traffic was.
I also have another comment. For years, I worked with families that lived in very dense housing, and so I'm very familiar with the problems that they have. And very often, people don't have, they need to call a plumber because their sewage is having a problem, or they're having water problems. I would hope that the developer would think about the people living in these units as well as our surrounding neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
At Johnson, 108 Ward Street, on the traffic study was done in March, is it? And Hingham, one, the selectmen mentioned recently, as selectmen mean with the age of the Hingham residents, the 60-plus growing, and we have many citizens that call the snowbirds that go away. They wouldn't be around at that time of the year. And as you know, the reaction of driving a car, as you get older, is slower, and going through that intersection is going to be harder at High, French, and Ward Street. And recently, at the polls this last week at the middle school, I noticed, I was there at the same time that the kids were being dropped off at the buses, but I also noticed how many parents drop off their kids at the school. And the principal was outside greeting the kids coming in, so I mentioned that to him. He said, "Yeah, and people don't realize that. The buses are full, but a lot of kids are driven to school, so that's going to add on to that also." Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening. Rebecca Shambada, 104 Ward Street. Yeah, I just was trying to think about my own, like, lifestyle in terms of traveling to and from work, and I work from home, so I guess I wouldn't count, but at the same time, I drop my daughter off during peak hours at daycare, so I'm in and out of the house twice.
Where are you on Ward Street?
On Ward.
Closer to High Street?
104, you said?
I'm on the, sort of in the middle. I'm next to, two away from Jehovah's Witness.
Okay.
So really close.
Okay.
Towards.
Actually, the other way.
Cushing.
Towards Cushing.
Yeah, but I jog the road every day with my daughter, and it's very nerve-wracking.
We got it.
And I'm thinking I'm not going to go down that way anymore. I'll just double up the other way. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Brad Taylor, 16 Autumn Circle. Two things. First, with the 18 units of two bedrooms and 18 units of three bedrooms, as it was commented, is 90 bedrooms. I believe septics have to be done on bedroom, number of bedroom counts. So this area perked for, I think it was three, but I'll even say five bedrooms, five houses, and I'll even say they're all four-bedroom houses. That's 20 bedrooms. You're now putting in 90 bedrooms on an area that would support, at the uppermost range, 20 in your septic system. That's not even close. As for the traffic studies, the peak hours were defined four to six, correct? Did you look at the train schedule for Green Bush?
No.
No. So the earliest train that comes out of Boston around when most people leave work is 5:20. That arrives theoretically on time, if it's on time, at 5:48. People come out there, so by the time you even get to that intersection at the CVS, it's about 6:00 o'clock. So you're missing all of that traffic, and, whoa, you said four to six. I'm correct? Okay, so they probably wouldn't be there till at earliest 6:00. The next train out of Boston is 5:45.
Right, just to be clear, so when he was referring to the peak time, that's the time, he's not missing traffic. That traffic occurs at a later time. It's not in the peak time. So if the peak time is defined at certain hours.
Yeah.
And you're saying the train arrives so people would not be at this intersection until afterwards.
Yes.
So they would not be there during the peak time. It doesn't mean, he's not saying that there's not other traffic, he's just saying it's not between the hours that have been defined as the peak hours.
Correct. Okay, let me rephrase that then. Most of the commuters would be coming out outside of your peak hour, as you have defined.
Okay.
The next train out leaves Boston at 5:45. It arrives, I think about 6:25, if I remember, 6:20. That train is packed every night. So again, outside of peak hours. The next one is 6:30. That train is crowded every single day. All of those coming home are outside of the peak hour counts. They may be accounted for, but they're not in your peak hours. The trains going in, you're missing the 6:07. 7:04, maybe you're catching some of that if you start your peak hour at 7:00. Most people get to the trains more than four minutes in advance, though.
I've seen them getting there in 30 seconds in advance. But you're right.
They do the same thing at the shipyard, too, I should say. But I just want to make, you know, sort of reiterate Chairman Fisher's point. The traffic study looks at the peak hour as determined by the traffic counts at the intersection, or the peak hour of the roadway, and we assume that's the worst case. So we look at the realistic worst case when we do that. I don't disagree that there's a steady stream of traffic going to and from the Green Bush at all hours. But if they're outside the peak hours, it doesn't have that deleterious effect, if you would.
I would.
On the intersection, as some would.
Okay. Sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right. But that's what we look at, is the peak hour of the roadway.
Before you, I think, I think the point, Brad, that you're making is that maybe the worst hour for that intersection is not the peak hour, it might be something different.
Correct.
And we need to look at that, not, right.
Yes.
So that's the point. Okay, I got it.
But that would have been reflected in the 48-hour traffic count data that you had, correct?
So we will.
Which included two weekday periods during those commuter peaks.
Which dates did you do?
It was two weekdays, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
But the issue that you're raising is something that we'll make sure that our peer review.
Correct.
Looks at, so.
Thank you.
But I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Before you do, is there anyone else who hasn't spoken who would like to have any? Yes.
My name is Eleanor Hickey, and I live at 5 Autumn Circle. And in terms of off-peak, I know you did peak times, one of the biggest concerns is the dump. We have a lot of extra traffic at that intersection. We have a lot of extra traffic at that intersection on the weekends. People are heading over there on Thursday, so I don't think that, I think that was one of the days you did the study, but Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Just for non-Hingham folks, that's our transfer station, which we fondly refer to as the dump.
Yeah. And in addition to that, it's important to note that the development down in Weymouth, there's a CVS, which many of us go back and forth several times during the week. In addition, it's important to understand that Marguette's Fields, children are down there playing lacrosse, and it's pretty intense on the weekends. It really is. And also during the week after school, I think Notre Dame Academy, they drive over there. So there's a lot of back and forth with high school kids that have their license for a very limited time, and that adds to the danger of that intersection. In addition, I don't know if you could show the map again of the different streets? That would be really helpful if someone could put that back up. One of my biggest concerns is the queuing from Ward Street onto High Street.
I'm not sure that's all that. Yeah, I think we're going to need the light off again, yeah.
Thank you. It's hard to see. When you look at the driveway and the sightlines from the proposed development, right now it's just one street, Viking Lane.
Right.
What's going to happen is it's already queuing up beyond that site in the mornings, when it gets very busy, because it is a dangerous intersection.
So going from Ward to High, it's backing up past Viking Lane.
That's correct. So if people are trying to get out of there, that's going to add to that pressure. And I think anyone who lives on that corner can tell you that often, they're having a hard time just getting out of their driveways because of the queuing of traffic. And a lot of that traffic, too, is attributed to going down to the train station, so.
Making the hard left turn, which is even slower.
They're taking their life in their hands when they do that. In addition, the other concern that I have is the sightlines for Ward Street. So we talked a lot about sightlines for High Street, but the development that you're proposing, the sightlines there are very dangerous. There's been quite a few accidents. Mr. Youssef mentioned that. A lot of people come down off that hill, and they're driving too fast. Also, people are going up the hill, and they can go off to the right. And sometimes, they're moving way too fast, and they're impatient. They want to get through that intersection, and they're bumping into each other. So I do think there's a lot more to think about in terms of safety and the traffic flow in that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. Get the lights back up. Anyone else? Okay, now, go ahead, do it.
Just thinking about my mornings. We look for buses in the morning. Rebecca Shimbata from Ward Street. And about ten buses go by. I think they're all relocating at 7:30 in the morning. So I don't know if that was accounted for, but they all come by empty from Cushing to High.
Thank you. Okay. Susan, did you want to address at all the adequacy of the application, or would you like to defer that to another meeting?
No, we can, we can talk about some of that now. I mean, Emily has.
Make sure you're talking into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Emily and I are sharing the mic, so I don't know if you want, you want to go through it and then if the legal issues come up, I can address those.
Sure. So we looked at the requirements of 760 CMR, fifty-six point oh five, in addition to Mr. Youssef. Under 2A of that section, we just make the notation that there are no landscape improvements shown on the plan, which is one of the requirements. In addition, the zoning board's rules would require topographic changes and easements to be identified that aren't presently shown on the plan. Under item C, the elevations don't call out dimensional figures, particularly heights, which is something that would be indicated in the regulations as required. Under item D, we're just looking for a clarification whether the parking coverage, the roadway slash parking coverage tabulation shown on the plans includes driveways, or if it was limited to parking and roadways. Under item G, I'm just going to read to you, in addition to traffic circulation, Title V, the project eligibility letter issued by Mass Housing instructs the applicant to be prepared to explore the following issue more fully during the public hearing process. Those issues are floodplain management, protection of wetlands, river and wildlife habitats slash conservation areas, local and state requirements related to public water supply, stormwater runoff, wastewater treatment, and hazardous waste safety. We would require more detailed filings to allow the board to review these matters, particularly with respect to requests for waivers to local regulations.
Right. So, yeah, so speaking to that, I mean, there's this question about what's the minimum that's required to be, there are certain things that the applicant needs to meet, state standards, Title V, stormwater, et cetera. But there's a couple of issues here. The first one being, these were issues that were called out in great detail in the comments to Mass Housing in connection with the project eligibility application. And so although Mass Housing, as it typically does, says, okay, the project has to comply with the state's standards before you get a building permit, they specifically tell the applicant, and, you know, we're using almost verbatim, the project eligibility letter, that the applicant shall be prepared to explore these issues more fully during the hearing process, which can only be more fully explored if the board has the necessary level of information to review them. In addition, related to that is the, kind of the global, we just want to waive all of the local regulations. And Emily spoke to Mass Housing about that today, so if you want to speak to that conversation.
Yeah, so the application does call out very specific waivers from the zoning bylaw. However, there are blanket waiver requests from local conservation regulations, Board of Health regulations, and all other required local regulations. We spoke with Mass Housing today, and just about this issue, and whether their expectation was that the applicant would have identified at this stage very specific waiver requests. And that is their expectation, that is customary. I think it maybe was implied at the end of the last meeting that it's more typical, from your perspective, to just submit an open-ended waiver request. But that's not our understanding or practice, nor is it the subsidizing agency's expectation.
So that, I mean, that's the big, the biggest issue, because that's where the biggest concerns raised by the town officials and the residents have been with respect to this project. You know, we also note that in the ZBA rules and regulations for 40B applications, there's also a bit more specificity. So the submission, the application says, here, our submission complies with all the zoning board rules and regs and state regs for submissions, but Emily went through and identified probably at least a dozen aspects of detail with respect to the roadway design and parking and open space areas, et cetera, that are not really covered in the submissions. There are some things in the zoning board regulations, primarily with respect to the economic, uneconomic conditions, that type of thing, which is not ripe now, because under the regulations, you're much further down the road with proposing conditions before the question of economic, uneconomic comes in. So we're not looking to those in particular, but just what, how is the site being designed? So like I said, I mean, if there's going to be a peer review, civil engineers, there typically is, they would look at it with a finer eye than Emily or I might, and might come up with a more detailed list, but this was just our overview, looking at it in response to the letter from council that came in.
There are also, I think, in addition, a few local concerns that have been raised by town officials with respect to these plans that the applicant hasn't yet responded to. I've done just a quick summary of the ones that would suggest plan modifications are required and/or additional submittals that might be relevant, if I can take just a sec to go through those. And these are primarily related to the site itself and not off-site related improvements, in particular with respect to traffic. So one, that the Viking Lane right-of-way is too narrow. State Fire Code requires a minimum of twenty feet of width. Both planning and police recommend a minimum of twenty-four feet.
And Emily, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'll just add to that, that the traffic consultant is also recommending tonight a sidewalk on Viking Lane, which would involve even more width for the right-of-way of the road, in addition to whatever the minimum fire code would be.
So we would need revised plans that show this? Yep.
So we heard from the fire chief that a cul-de-sac presently on the site should be replaced by a T-intersection. The fire department also requires a secondary access to be incorporated to Ward Street, since Road B exceeds eight hundred feet in length. All driveway lengths must be a minimum of twenty feet to avoid overhang into the street or onto potential sidewalks. The planning board and others have recommended sidewalks. Your traffic engineer has also recommended a sidewalk. Soil evaluations and percolation testing must be performed and observed by the board's engineering consultant to determine the adequacy of soils in the wastewater disposal area. A stormwater management report should be submitted for review. I'll note that in addition to that, there was an issue raised in the project eligibility stage by the Board of Selectmen about the drainage infrastructure within the Viking Lane right-of-way that ties into the town's infrastructure in Ward Street. And it's our position that that would require an easement to be granted from town meeting.
So the town, as a matter of policy, does not allow, unless a roadway is going to become a public way, which was the intention with Viking Lane, private developments are not permitted to feed their stormwater into the town of Hingham's stormwater system. In fact, I, for example, there was a project over on Abington Street where they needed to outflow into a culvert, and easements were granted. There was requirements for easements into a private wetland where the water was going. It was a well-documented and negotiated process for that to happen.
We've heard again tonight that greater separation should be provided between the buildings, as well as from Ward Street and adjoining neighborhoods. In addition, the conservation officer has suggested that all buildings be pulled outside of minimally the fifty-foot buffer. Landscaping plans, including internal street trees, should be submitted. Snow storage should be identified on the plan in appropriate locations. And then we've discussed the specific waiver requests, so.
So that is our initial response to your May ninth letter that we received, May tenth. And you are certainly welcome to meet with Emily outside of these proceedings to go over what she has discussed here, as well as any additional information requests. The board, this board, needs to make sure that when we consider projects like this, that we have all the information, that we're in a position to have it properly peer-reviewed. One of the things that you need to consider, as well as the board, is when something's presented to, for peer review, there's a cost. And you may want to limit how many iterations. So if you're not comfortable with the current iteration, you may say, wait, don't have it peer-reviewed until the next one comes. So, I mean, right now, we're proceeding with, we would proceed with a peer review on what's been submitted, unless we hear from you otherwise. So we're going to proceed. There will be a budget associated with the peer review process. I just want to make sure that you're mindful of that as we proceed.
We, I have, we have read everything submitted. We're very aware of the regulations and bylaws. With regard to some of the comments on the application and whether or not it was sufficient, the overriding issue is it's a preliminary plan. I think that the boards always try to have more and more information, and that's a delicate balance in that. So one of the things is redesigning the entire plan with regard to one or more comments is not only an expensive process, but in terms of peer review, it has some issues. For example, and it's hard many times, when you're in this position, to hear comments that you'd love to respond to, but it's not the time or the place to do it for a number of different reasons. For example, the issue of the drainage that currently exists, okay? Wholeheartedly disagree with you. We have the right to use it, we have the right to do it, and I think the case law and the law supports us on that. So we're going to have an issue on that one, okay? But the, but the point being is I researched that long before we arrived here in this particular process. But we want to be able to respond as comprehensively as possible. Different towns, as you know, handle it differently. I'm only concerned with how Hingham handles this one, because it's certainly your application. But many times, when there's a peer review over engineer, and I'm not sure whether you use them or whether or not you do it just piecemeal, that hits all of these areas. So therefore, the submittal is certainly far more comprehensive with regard to each one of those issues. I looked at the plan, I measured them, the driveways are at least twenty feet, okay? Just by scaling it. So, but we can answer those, and if it's answered in a lineal manner, then we can certainly do that. I think that one of the, also the things, as we're working through this, because we used this, when we talked before, about how these plans morph in a way, and that's part of the process, in terms of listening to the particular process. For example, they're looking for an exit roadway, okay? That we want a second means of egress off of Ward Street. Well, there are a number of different ways to accomplish the goal. That particular goal may change the total structure of everything. So the question is how we do each piece. Do we go through farther down on Ward Street in terms of our access? Do we go through Autumn Circle? There's a number of different options that may be available that would severely change the impact upon the neighbors and certainly the design. So the more we hear the issues, you know, I mean, I don't know how to answer the blasting questions outside of the fact that Chapter 140 deals with strict liability with regard to blasting. And the law is quite clear on this matter. And I know the question's been raised three or four times in the process. So I want to be efficient with that, I want to be very, very respectful for it, but I want to make sure that we're answering. What you have provided to me is very helpful, thank you, to give us a little bit more guidance so that we can do it. One big issue is that a lot of this is going to emanate from the drainage cauc. Drainage cauc is an evolved process, and it's expensive, okay? As you know, because you've seen them. We have, are completing an analysis of that with regard to the design and any adjustments that we otherwise have. I don't know when, Brad, that might be available.
It's in next week.
So we'll be able, should be able to submit it to you next week. I think that would most likely prompt at least the peer review on that one. We're very, very aware of the deposit requirements and the payment. Because that is such a technical matter, that it really needs a peer review to deal with that, in terms of the anecdotal information that we've certainly heard up to this particular point in time. So we look forward to that. That should be submitted. And I think that that will be a little bit of a floodgate to allow us now to say, okay, if we do that, now we can do the other issue. With regard to the soils issue, we do have soils, but as a condition that we are permitted from DEP and from Board of Health with regard to the subsurface sewage disposal issue is not necessarily a requirement here. It is a condition, no doubt, that we have it. And so that is another area or issue about how far you go within the bounds of our obligation. One of the problems I've always found with 40B, and I've been doing it, I was, matter of fact, in my zoning board of appeals chairman for most of those years, for eighteen years, I have been through on that side of the table as well as this, so I'm very appreciative of that. How far, you know, can you go within that, that bounds of that? So we're trying to give you all the information we can, but 40B is not at all an efficient process. It is unfortunately sport for the rich, which takes years and years beyond almost anything else. And so it's that happy balance that I think everyone does. And I think you've recognized that in my comments in the meetings and also in my letter. So I do thank the board for giving us more feedback. That will allow us to have a more comprehensive approach. We're not ignoring any of this, we have been taking it in. Thank you.
So one of the issues that this board needs to consider, and that we consider for each 40B application, is where the town stands with respect to meeting the ten percent requirement. for each 40B application is where the town stands with respect to meeting the 10% requirement. And the board has been consistently taking the position that we have achieved the 10%. DHCD has not agreed with us, but we have been consistently taking that position, and under the 40B regs, we, we can proceed with a project even if we're over the 10%, under 40B, or we can invoke the 10% limit as a basis for saying that we could deny it or that we could impose conditions. And it is at this point that I think this board needs to consider whether or not we should be proceeding with the 10%. It's been our practice that we do it, and I, I can't think of a reason why we would not proceed with the, going down the 10% route and making it clear to the applicant as well as the DHCD that we're continuing our view that we could deny or impose conditions consistent with having reached the 10%. So I just opened that up for discussion.
I agree. I agree as well. I mean, it's been longstanding policy of this board and of the town, that we've met the obligation under the 10% safe harbor threshold in the regulations, so.
So at this point, I wouldn't entertain motions in that regard. Mr. Friedman?
Well, I would move several things. First, that pursuant with the 760 CMR 56.038A, the board finds that in connection with the present application, a denial of the permit or the imposition of conditions or requirements would be consistent with local needs on the grounds that the statutory minima, as defined at 760 CMR 56.031, has been satisfied, or the so-called 10% finding. Second, that the board's counsel is directed to issue a written notice to the applicant with a copy to the Department of Housing and Community Development, or DHCD, stating that the board considers that a denial of the permit or the imposition of conditions or requirements would be consistent with local needs, and, and further explaining the grounds and the factual basis for the board's position as provided in 760 CMR 56038A, that so-called 10% letter. And lastly, that the board designate Joseph Fisher as the person to follow through on the 10% letter and to communicate with council and with DHCD as needed in connection with the current application.
We have a motion, is it seconded?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
So we are proceeding with the issuing of our 10% letter. Susan, can you discuss what that does to our schedule?
Right, so while that process is going, it does not stay, meaning stop necessarily the hearings, but it does toll the 180-day period that the board has from the opening of the hearing, depending on how long the process takes. The submission deadline for the letter is tomorrow. We expect that the letter will be delivered to the applicant tomorrow. The applicant then, does not have to take, but has 15 days if it chooses to oppose, in the form required by the regulations. After that period has passed, with or without, the applicant's opposition, DHCD then has 30 days to issue a determination. Emily and I have been just looking at the schedule, and although, you know, we don't know kind of what the schedule of the applicant might be, if it chooses to oppose, we really can't look, kind of calculate what DHCD's timeframe is without knowing the date of that. So we're recommending, I think you said there, the meeting on June 6, that you continue to June 6, at which time we will have a better sense that if they've filed an opposition, we'll know what date by then it is, we'll know the timeframe DHCD has to act. In any, in any case that they have filed the opposition and DHCD has acted, the board then is still within its 20-day appeal period to decide whether or not, if it gets a negative determination, whether or not to appeal. So our recommendation is that you continue no later than June 6, and you can decide whether you just want to do it as a brief meeting to check in on the timeframes, or whether you wanna have any kind of substantive discussion at that hearing.
And June 6 is a Monday?
It's a Monday, so I believe two of you were available anyways. We have a couple of continued hearings scheduled for that evening, but it would be an extra evening meeting for Maria.
Are you in town? June 6?
June 6, it's a Monday, yeah.
I don't think so.
So we might plan on either, you know, a quick check-in at 6:45 for an update, and then you have hearings scheduled already, I believe, for 7:00 PM.
Right.
What is your, the applicant, are you, are you available on June 6?
We'd have to check very briefly, but to make your calculations easy, we will challenge.
That's fine, but we don't know what day, right. Well, I don't wanna be presumptuous, but we don't know what date you will file, and the 30 days for DHCD is taken off of your date.
Now, we do have 15 days from receipt by the letter tomorrow to do so, I'm well aware of that.
Right.
That was helpful, because I was, I was in anticipation of the consistency of what this board has done with the other 40 days, that that was the action you're gonna take, and I probably know the exact words of the letter that you're gonna hand to me. But we will challenge that, and probably depending upon a number of different circumstances, that would definitely, well, first of all, it will absolutely be within the 15 days.
Right.
So the 6th, I don't know if you can check here.
I think it would be, I would expect it would be a brief meeting on the 6th.
So it's not gonna be a substantive meeting, except for how we doing and what is the expectation of what it is, because since DHCD has already ruled on this on numerous occasions, I would expect a fairly prompt response.
Right.
And then it depends upon your...
It's really just to make, see where we are in the timeframe, to make sure that the board, if it choose, if assuming another negative determination, the board then needs to decide whether or not to appeal that, and that at least it would put us within the window that you would have the ability to make that decision. If you wait beyond June 6 and things move very fast, you might run into a problem with your 20-day appeal period. So we don't recommend beyond June 6.
Is there any reason we can't authorize that appeal now?
No, there is no reason that you couldn't vote, that in the event of a negative determination, you authorize council to file an appeal on your behalf, and then you don't have to worry about it.
That's what I would recommend.
It's up to the board.
So, Joe, would you echo that motion?
I would, so, echo that motion.
So that, so...
So I would second it.
And the motion being that in the event of a negative determination by DHCD, the board authorizes council to pursue an appeal.
Okay. But do you, I mean, I don't know if at some point you still want to have a check-in meeting or not?
No, no, I intend on still having that meeting. This is not a substitute for that, but in the event things happen on dates that we don't expect, at least we're covered. Joe's made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we've done that. I think it's important that we meet at a minimum to make sure that what you think is in the record, we can confirm that it is in the record, and if there's anything else you wanna put in, if there's any additional reports, we can, so that we can proceed, because if we do do the appeal, there will be a stay, an automatic stay that applies pursuant to the regulations. So, but I do wanna make sure that we've gotten the record what the applicant desires to be in there.
In terms of the 6th, if we're gonna be meeting on the 6th, as long as there's nothing substantive outside of the, you know, the procedural things we're going through, because I wouldn't intend to bring everyone here, so you may be unfortunately left with me.
Well, I think you're only budgeting 15 minutes for this, right?
So our expectation would be at 6:45, so ahead of our 7 o'clock, we wouldn't want you to have to wait through all these other proceedings that are already scheduled. So we would, as a courtesy, just do you first in advance at 6:45.
And I'm sure that Emily and I are gonna be talking about a number of things, so we should be able to be very efficient.
Does that time work for you?
Yeah, that would.
Okay. So with that, I would...
So you want to move?
Yeah, I would accept the motion to continue this hearing to 6:45 PM on Monday the 6th, to Monday the 6 of June.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This hearing is continued to the 6th of June.
Thank you, folks.
Emily, is there anything else you wanna proceed on this evening that I would accept the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? We're adjourned.